It's any different than how I usually am. Come on.
It was too bad yesterday. And it hurts and I can't eat hardly anything and that just doesn't help. My increasing irritation with a number of things on our agenda, but you know. Just breathe deeply. I was moaning the other night. I was just like, oh my God, I need a vacation. And my son said, Mom, you can't have a vacation. And I was like, what is it out of the mouth of babes?
That's what you use to convince the labor of the audience.
Yes, yeah. Actually, we're going to not bike state this weekend down in Drago. Where I fully intend to sort of wander around in this beautiful mesa where it's held. Sit my little camp here. And have no thoughts. It's like, we wonder.
Just so before we get started, when we go into executive session, we're going to go upstairs to the conference room. So we can have a closed door and we'll have Chris Japp will be on them. I've got my computer up there all set to zoom already.
I think all the mics, yeah, they're all live. So just to remind you all to speak into your mic when you talk, please. Cause we have to listen, you know, beyond the mask.
And Diane, I realized after our last meeting that really I wasn't very good at paying attention to the Zoom portion of the meeting. I think I probably didn't call some people appropriately. You know, waving, but it's because I wasn't. My focus wasn't, wasn't enough on, on the Zoom screen. I almost wish it was.
In front of you.
Well, maybe, I mean, that's probably over.
So I try to stand up to get your attention when someone needs to speak.
Just yell at me or walk over and slap me or whatever you need to do.
Without violence.
Especially if somebody has a comment.
Well, we tried to be polite.
Yeah, well, polite didn't work, sorry. Is everybody ready to go? We can go and get started. We do six oh one and at six oh one, I call the city council meeting of October the 19th, 2021 to order. We'll call, please.
Mayor lobby.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
Council member Gowing.
Here.
Council member Laritzen.
Here.
Council member Hill.
Present.
Council member for GNC.
Present.
Council member Tharp.
Here.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we're going to take a motion, please.
Now I move to approve the agenda.
Green sentence.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we have housekeeping matters. I do want to, I put this on the dais. This is something the county, I've actually been talking to the county commissioners office for a couple of weeks and I knew they were, they were thinking of implementing it. They have done that. I would like for us to implement it as well. I will put something together. I just, unless somebody thinks it's not a good idea, I like that, that they're including everybody who's been vaccinated and then they will also then offer that bonus to anybody who gets vaccinated. Okay, I would like to do the same for the city and just kind of mirror what they've done. We had talked about a $200 bonus, but they, they were one fifty and I don't want to do something different than what they've done, so.
Sounds good.
The only other note I have is, is we have an IGA from Christiana for the housing director. IG between the city and county for a housing director. That has been passed on to the county a few days ago for their review. And it's in draft form now, so. We'll see how that goes, but we really want to get an IGA in place so that we're in a position to hire housing director when the time comes. Are there any other housekeeping matters? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on then. At this time, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to city council on topics that are not on this agenda? If you would, please come up, introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, thank you. We have two sets of minutes here for our approval. The first is for October the 12th, 2021. Actually, the first October fifth, let's do it. October fifth, 2021. Are there any issues with those minutes that we'd like to see corrected?
On page two. The ninth paragraph, public hearing for certificate. There's just the clarification needed after Heather Glide. Just a word missing, I think, maybe.
Yeah, but instead of no, there were no comments.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, council member for GNC's name is misspelled on that page. On that paragraph just above it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any other changes? Did I raise any motion, please?
All motions to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021.
With second. With suggested changes.
With the suggested changes.
Thank you very much.
No second.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Next up, we have October 12th.
On page two, down towards the bottom, the paragraph CM Tharp brought up last week's request. I think I said DOLA and were those DOLA funds or I think I maybe got the name wrong.
The, the presentation was by SCAD.
Okay.
I don't remember if they were DOLA funds. They weren't SCAD funds.
Right.
So I, I think that.
So it was by SCAD about DOLA funds. So that is correct then. Okay.
Any other possible changes? Then I would entertain motion, please.
Now I move to approve the special meeting minutes for Tuesday, October 12th.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Laritzen, that's Dan.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the department reports. We'll start with police department report.
The news is police departments are recruiting applicants. Attorney, you have five police officer applicants, one of them is post-certified, four of them are part of the industry. They're all local residents that all have houses. They've all lived here for a number of years. We've also hired or offered a job to a traditional full-time administrative assistant. Who is also a local resident. Big need we have here. One of the police officers after Christmas, Will Martin, has been hired to serve as officer pending his successful completion of the application process. Waiting for his psychonightful station at tomorrow. He'll get something back in the next few days. The applicants are Will Martin, he's age forty-one, married to Silver's, twenty-year Marine Corps veteran. Formerly worked as a bartender here in town, he's called Gerald Sucker for the Williams School District. He's a very experienced school teacher. He's going to need to go to family. He is willing to go to the academy.
Oh, well, actually, that's a great point. We're going to have, there's no way for the audio to pick up anybody who's not at the podium. Or at this, at our dais, so I apologize. Or can, can they, can you use that microphone? If you can, that would be better.
How's that? I'm being recorded now?
Pardon? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Maria Porizel, she's twenty-two years old, single. No student, no, no, no kids. Currently works at Track Supply. Previous work experience at Skeet Cooper. She's a local resident. She is also willing to go to the academy down in Glenwood Springs in January. Next is Devin Connell, age thirty-one. First child due any day now. If the child hasn't arrived already, I don't know. Bachelor's degree in civil engineering, extensive work experience overseas in Africa and Latin America. He speaks some Spanish. His wife is, is the director of Get Outdoors Leadville, also a local resident. Devin is probably going to be going to the academy in Breckenridge in May, assuming he gets through the hiring process for obvious reasons. Rebecca, Becky Carey, age thirty-nine. Single, two children, high school graduate, currently works as long-term special ed substitute here at Lake County School District. Worked several jobs locally. She's an avid outdoors woman, also resides in Leadville. She will also would be able to go to the academy in Breckenridge. She has young children to take care of. Shelby Phillips, twenty-three, single, high school graduate. Some college, completed her collateral post-training at Pueblo Community College. Previously worked, employed at the Lake County Sheriff's Office, currently works at security at St. Vincent Hospital. Pending the completion of her hiring protocol, she'll go directly into field training. Joanna Lopez, age twenty-five, single, two children, high school graduate and currently works as a lead teller at First Bank in Silverthorne. Bilingual, Spanish, English. She accepted our job offer for the administrative assistant position on the fifteenth and we'll start here on the twenty-fifth, Monday. Just so you know, the academy costs, total cost for sending two candidates to the January classes is going to be held on Spring Valley campus. Under Glenwood is $20,480. I have a breakdown of the cost. If anybody would like to take, take a detailed look at that. It includes housing and we have to buy a meal plan. It'll be living in dorms down there for the duration of the, of the academy. For the two candidates, hopefully that we send to the Breckenridge class, that would be a cost in the city, $9,600. Total projected twenty-two, twenty-two academy training costs, $30,080. This is just assuming we don't have any more applicants during the year, but we could very well have more down the road. So, new hire training plan. Due to the intense competition for police officer job candidates, our plan is to hire each of our current applicants as soon as they complete our selection protocols and begin a pre-academy training process. All right. We are proposing, Mayor and I have talked about this, creation of a new job category. Tentatively, we're calling it community guardians, but we could change that name depending. Which will provide new hire police officer candidates with an opportunity to serve the community in a civilian capacity. Receive in-depth instruction on topics not covered in the academy, setting an experiential training on critical policing tasks, such as de-escalation, conflict, conflict resolution, report writing, et cetera. Their duties would be as follows. Work in pairs while patrolling the community in marked police vehicles to provide a police presence. Duties would be limited strictly to observation and reporting suspicious and/or criminal activity within city limits. Provide traffic control assistance to major incidents and/or events within city limits. Conduct frequent foot patrols of the Harrison Avenue Commercial District as community ambassadors. And participate in pre-academy classroom training and training exercises. We didn't reinvent the wheel here. Denver PD has a similar civilian position called civilian report technicians. And they're authorized to take the following reports: burglary, theft of motor vehicle, motor vehicle theft. Theft, shoplifting, criminal mischief, graffiti, bicycle theft, identity theft, found property lost or stolen property, including checks, credit cards or credit. Excuse me, checks, credit or, or credit cards. This type of a program would really take, take quite a bit of the workload off of our sworn officers and free them up for more emergent calls or things that require post certificate or an arrest. This would, would keep our applicants, our, our new hires engaged in during that, that lag time between the initial job offer and going to the academy. This first group, we'd like to look at this as a pilot program for, to perhaps make this like a permanent job. There are a number of people out there that, that might be interested in like a civilian position and may not be sure about whether or not they want to pursue the full-on police job, but this might be an opportunity to, to afford people an opportunity to get their foot in the door, get a taste for police work, see what it's all about, serve the community. I've, I've been speaking to Ben Cairns at CMC about developing a program for high school kids leading up to the age of twenty-one. This type of a program would allow us to engage younger people that aren't old enough to be police officers, but between that eighteen-year-old, eighteen, eight, in age of eighteen and twenty-one. This could be a position that they could fill to serve the community, provide a needed service. And then when they become old enough, if they're still interested, we could just slot them right into the academy. So we could get them engaged, get them, get them, you know, get them to know the department, find out what police work is like, get a taste of it. The other, the other thing, benefit of this is that in the event we have somebody that gets hired and, and changes their mind. They, you know, they get, you know, they get into this and they, and they don't, they find out they don't like the work or for whatever reason. It's good to find that out before we run them through a police academy. You know, the, you know, this is, you know, this is kind of a good opportunity to, to give people to test the waters. You know, and, and see if they, they, you know, if this is really something they want to do. And then we don't end up wasting taxpayers' money sending, sending people to an academy and then they, then they find out there, oh, I don't, I don't like this. So that is what we are working on. The pay rate during their, their participation in this program would be the training pay rate of $53,000 a year. With benefits, because they would be working full-time. And again, we have an opportunity to really get them squared away before they hit the academy. You know, we can give them basic firearms training, arrest control techniques. The big, well, biggie is report writing skills. And they could get these things, get these things ironed out, these bumps in the roads fixed before they get to the academy, which would increase the likelihood of them being successful during the academy training. So that's, that's the big news on recruiting.
Wow.
Any questions for the chief about that? I do have a couple of quick addendai to this. The chief and I spoke at length about trying to get an academy up here in Jamie, either in Leadville or in Breckenridge. And because the academy is, is going to be remote, we'll have to, you know, put people up and even then we can't get all the people to participate at this time. We were, let's just say, the, the, the powers that be were less than interested in our request. And so they, they declined to act on our request. And what we told it is, we have five people, we'll pay, if we have to, we'll pay for all eight. You know, because that's what, that's what they need to put on an academy is eight, eight candidates. And they just, they, they weren't interested in helping. I'll just leave it at that. I was very disappointed, still a little disappointed, because I think they could have responded to our need, but they, they just, we're not willing to do that. Nonetheless, regardless of what the reason is, we were not able to accomplish that. And so I am pleased that we have two people who are willing to do the room and board Monday through Friday at the academy in Glenwood Springs. And that's a, and then we have one person who's already post-certified. If all these people, you know, make it through the gauntlet of, of psychological examinations and physical examinations, then, then we have five candidates. But this is a, I'll just call it a slow burn. There's, we, we don't know of any quick way to try and resolve the issues we have. And, and we have in the past gone to academies and recruited people to come here. That has been unbelievably unsuccessful. In case it's not obvious. It just, it, it just doesn't work. So I think that, that that the chief's idea of let's focus on local people who, who live here, who want to serve this community and become police officers. Let's do that. And I, I think that's the right, right direction to go.
So Commissioner Edwards, I, I just think this is creative and really seems like a potentially amazing idea that would solve a lot of problems here, both in the short term, perhaps in the long term. But to, just to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly. Prior to going to the academy, these people, if they were hired, could operate as community guardians and could take reports, gain extra training, could issue tickets in some standards? No.
No.
They couldn't do arrests or tickets.
No.
But they could do some of the footwork.
Reports, burglary reports. Basically reports where there's no suspect. You know, or very little suspect information. Yeah, no evidence, because they're not, they won't be trained in evidence collection.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I would add that the chief and I met with, with sheriff today and it was about five of us in the room. But one of the things we've agreed to is we need to note, let the public know where we stand. Both, both departments are in a bad, sad spot. And we don't know of any quick way to get out of that. Okay? In the meantime, I think the creativity of, of community guardians may help and may show a presence that doesn't currently exist. So I think that's helpful. The Hal and Amy are going to put together a joint statement. And my offer is I'll put it in a newsletter form and I'll send it to every household in Lake County. And we'll do that. They, they've committed to having that by next Tuesday. Brother Jamie has.
She has.
Okay. And then as, as soon as we have that statement that everybody's agreed to, then I will put it in a newsletter form. And as we know, it takes about two weeks from the time I send it to Terrell. By the time it, it lands on people, so, in their mailboxes. But that's, that's our next step as, as a joint effort to inform the public of where we are and where we're going.
Could we make sure that goes out in English and Spanish?
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor, is there any concern that sending it out to every household may be perhaps not the right idea?
That occurred to me, but I, I, I would say that, that both the commissioner and, and the, and the sheriff feel like it is the right thing to do. So I'm going with their gut instincts.
The only reason why I say that is that we're saying, hey, there's nobody out there to patrol our streets and we're at limited capacities. That's not going to be, I mean, all the people that are above our citizens shouldn't be a problem. Right? But the ones that perhaps aren't, and I don't know what that percentage is, one percent? Less than one percent? I don't know. Is there, is that a ticket for people to be a little less?
Well, I, I haven't, I, I don't know what the sheriff is going to write. You know, I won't know till Tuesday. But I, I would not want to say that we're not, there's not going to be police or sheriff. I think that my, you know, my vision for this is to state that if you have a, a non-emergent need for police services and then a, a brief listing of the types of, of non-violent property crimes, like, you know, vandalism, right? Or a broken window, rock through a window, or you know, theft, something, something that doesn't need immediate, you know, and, and immediate police response, it would be what I would, would be willing to sign off on. I, I wouldn't get into, you know, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to have a police presence, because that's not the case. It's just going to be, calls will be prioritized. And those on the lower rungs of the prioritization are not going to necessarily get immediate police service. That's, I think that's the way this should be crafted. Which, which really is, a lot of agencies do that now. There's, 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 there's quite a few larger agencies that have non-emergency phone lines, where if you don't have an emergency, you don't call nine-one-one, you call this other line. Quite a few agencies have policies in place where you, if you've got a, you know, a minor police report or something like that, you just go to the police station or you go online and you file the report there. So this is not, not necessarily something brand new.
Do we have that capability to file online for folks?
Um, not at this time.
Okay. I mean, it, it would be nice if we give them the options, you know, yeah.
I agree with you, Jane, yeah.
And, and I think part of that too, the dispatch, we need to make sure that dispatch is trained appropriately to know that, okay, here's the prioritization. And yeah, if it's vandalism, you know.
That, that was, that was brought up at the meeting and it was recognized that the dispatchs are, the dispatchers are going to require some additional training and ask some additional questions to make sure that the, that the, the protocols are followed.
Thank you. Would the community guardians be able to do wellness checks?
Yes.
We also have a co-responder who can, who can ride along on wellness checks.
Well, this is like the best news we've had in a long time.
Well, so, I mean, believe me, Hal and I have been meeting more than once a day for, for weeks on this. So you know, I think the effort is a good one. But, but I think we need to talk about the sheriff's letter. And, and Hal and I both have very strong feelings about this letter, but I'm going to let Hal talk about the letter right now. And we did meet with the sheriff today and with two of the county commissioners. So this was also the topic of discussion and we can go over that. Hal, would you please respond to this letter?
Yeah, I've, I went through this line by line. The, the discussion with the sheriff really didn't change much in the way I view this. I'll just, I'll just get right into it. Paragraph one, the sheriff says, quote, "Many functions the city is relying on the sheriff's office to provide." My question to that is, where's the data to support this assertion? Which functions? Frequency of occurrence. Now, in all fairness, he did provide us with a list of fifty different report numbers, case numbers during our meetings. But this, this, these are just numbers. It did, you know, it doesn't tell anything about the nature of these calls. Were they emergent calls? Were they routine calls? Are these just burglary? What are all these numbers? We, we here at the police department are not able to go into e-force and print out a report like the ones that we make for ourselves for these meetings where we have the, you know, the details of the calls and all, all the information. We, we would have to get that information from the sheriff's office and my administrative manager Shannon here has, has reached out to them to try and determine exactly what, what she's talking about here. And they still haven't responded. And they still haven't responded to us. So all I have is fifty report numbers that I don't know how we're gonna dig into this and find out what it, you know, you know, exactly what it is to get a clearer picture, because we can't get a view it from from that, you know, like they can. So moving on, paragraph two. She says, at that time, the department had three and one-half officer positions filled out of eight budgeted. This was back when when Sage Bertolos was here. Since then, the city has hired a new commissioner, me, in lieu of a police chief. And the staffing level of the police department has dwindled to two and one-half officer positions. My interpretation, my interpretation of this is that she seems to be suggesting that my my presence, my arrival on the scene has resulted on one and and one officer leaving, which is really not not an accurate description of what happened. This particular officer, from the from the day he set foot here, he's he's wanted to get out of here. He he told me himself that he applied for Eagle County sheriffs at the same time he applied here. And in fact, he had been, he had been dismissed from the sheriff's department before he was hired here on the police department, and he was dismissed with cause. So I would submit to you that that this this was really somebody that was a problem employee. And was was lucky to get his job here thanks to the mayor. And then he'd, you know, you know, show his way of showing appreciation for that, getting that second chance was to resign and go to Eagle County. So that's the story of him. Another sentence here, the recently hired commissioner is unable to act in the official capacity of chief of police as he has not obtained current post certification and is unlikely to obtain certification for several months, further challenging resources with the ability to provide policing. Well, this but this statement begs the question, was I hired to be a patrol officer or take the lead in rebuilding and leading this organization? The only task that not being post certified prevent me from doing are patrol activities. And I want the city council to know that as shortly after I got hired here, I submitted my paperwork to post to apply for the refresher academy. On the September 29th, I got a letter from them saying that I had been approved to attend that academy. And as and that very same day, I tried to apply for the academy and couldn't apply, because they closed off the applications, because it was too close to the start date, which was in October this month. So due to, you know, you know, no fault of my own, I have to sit and wait until April to go to this two-week refresher academy. But in the meantime, this is not going to prevent me from, you know, managing this organization, getting this community guardian program off the ground, recruiting people, improving the policies and procedures here, et cetera, et cetera. So I I I just question the motivation. Why, you know, why would you put something like that in a letter? She goes on, most calls for service within the city have fallen to the sheriff's office to take responsibility for. Well, you know, again, my question is, what factual information is this assertion based on? And where is the data to support this claim? You know, I I, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put these things out there, my practice is to back it up with data and cold hard facts and not just hearsay. Or giving me this, a bunch of numbers with nothing else on it. So moving on, paragraph three. And this is probably the most contentious thing for me, is that in the three months since the city hired Commissioner Edwards, numerous attempts to contact him have been unsuccessful, literally due to an inability to reach him. Well, my response to that is, I I have an office on the second floor of City Hall with a working phone. My office is equipped with an operable computer with a working Gmail account. Sheriff Reyes has had my personal phone number since the day I started this job. She dropped me off in front of my house one that day, and I and I gave her my phone number then. When I'm away from the office, I tell my staff where I'm going. The ground floor police department offices are staffed by civilian administrative staff who answer the phone and take messages when I am away from the office. I have absolutely no reason to avoid contact with Sheriff Reyes. And to say that I'm unreachable is an extraordinarily false statement. I've had officers call me at home. I've had officers come to my house and I've spoken to them in the driveway. I, as I stated earlier, I had, when I was away in California a couple of weeks ago, I had I had staff, this staff texting me for days back and forth about an issue that was going on here. Okay. I have no reason to hide from anybody. If you want to know where I am, and if you can't, if for some reason you can't get through to me, you can always call Shannon and and they, I I don't hide from people. I have an open door policy. And to say this is is an insult to my integrity. And I don't know where she's getting this information from. During this meeting, she she made allegations that that are, that that my officers have been out there on the streets and needed me to respond to serious calls. I called my Sergeant Ortega, John Ortega, who had, who's been on night shift most of the time that I've been here. And I asked him, I said, hey, John, have you had, you know, sheriff told me about these hostage situations and knifings and all these serious crimes where you guys wanted me to be there? And and I said, what what's going on, man? You know, you you know, John calls me all the time. And he said, chief, I, it's not true. It's the, he couldn't give me one incident where there was a serious crime and he needed my presence where he he even felt like he needed to call me. So I, and again, I don't know, I have no idea who the sheriff is listening to. But it seems that the the person or persons that she's talking to are for perhaps feeding her false information. And I have a take home car, and the reason I take it home is so if they do call me, I can I can drive straight from my house to wherever it is. So and I asked for specifics, what what are the these calls, when, all this, and I couldn't get an answer. So, you know, I don't know where this is coming from. So so moving on, paragraph four. In this paragraph, the sheriff states her statutory law enforcement duties and suggests that her deputies engage in municipal code enforcement, quote, routine traffic violations and animal control. Just she goes on to say that law enforcement staff engage in activities such as, quote, supporting local fire and medical first responders, as well as generally helping maintain the quality of life in the city. Once again, I would like to see the the data that supports her assertion that her deputies are in fact enforcing municipal codes and or conducting traffic enforcement within within city limits. And the police department currently employs two community service officers tasked with with code enforcement. And many of you know that that our our code enforcement officer, Joe Swires, is no shrinking violet when it comes to to writing parking tickets and and abatements and things of that sort. I I I've on a regular basis have to entertain complaints for, you know, you know, about Joe and and, you know, what he does. But Joe, in Joe's defense, he's very thorough. He takes measurements, he has an extensive photo library of all these people, all these things that he's done. So to suggest that the police, that that the sheriffs are actually doing this stuff, again, I don't know where this is coming from. Paragraph five. After stating that the police department's budget is nine, quote, $923,000, Sheriff Reyes continues with, quote, it appears due to current staffing shortages, there has been and will continue to be significant vacancy savings that the city reaps while the law enforcement burden is inequitably balanced in the county's shoulders. Well, I'd like to point out that now that the sheriff is losing three deputies, she will accrue the money she would have paid those staff members. I understand her 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 predicament. She doesn't have a jail. Her department is having to spend a great deal of money to transport and and retrieve in arrestees to and from distant jails. I get that. But that that's not my fault. You know, the 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 sheriff by statute has to perform certain critical law enforcement functions. And that's got nothing to do with us, it's got nothing to do with me. So to date, the mayor has informed me that the city has received one bill for services rendered from the county in the amount of $5,700, which is paid in full without delay. During this meeting this afternoon, they they said basically that they that that the that the more accurate figure is like $15,000, which the mayor agreed to pay. I'd I'd like to know what constitutes the, quote, law enforcement burden? Where are the statistics indicating the sheriff's office spends an inordinate amount of time enforcing the law within city limits? Doing our respective jobs should not be characterized as a burden. Providing law enforcement services to this community is our duty. And the sheriff's responsibilities are defined by statute, whether her staff likes it or not. So I told the sheriff, you know, I asked her, why, why didn't you come to me when these situations occur? If there was some kind of major crime at a certain time, you know, given given date and time, why didn't you come to me? Well, you know, why gather this little pile of grievances? And then write something like this and disseminate it to the to the county commissioners and the city council? When I think it would have been more amicable to confer with me as these things occurred, so that I could address them with specificity? It, you know, if you come to me and say, well, this such and such had happened, and these have been five things, and this, that, and the other, well, all right, fine, but what, give me the details so I can address it. I can't, I I I cannot address performance issues with personnel or get to the bottom of why people can't supposedly can't reach me weeks later. If you have a problem, come to be when it occurs. I I have an office here, as I said, I have operable equipment and phones and things. You can get ahold of me. I'm disappointed by this, because these are hard times for both agencies, both 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 organizations are short of staff. It's very difficult to find good quality people to do this job right now, and that's a nationwide issue. And that's exacerbated by the shortage of housing here in this in this community and the high cost of living here. And I I I just don't think that this is a good idea, you know, or a good time to 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 sling these kinds of arrows when we need to be working together to try and and provide some level of public safety to the community. That should be the priority. Not 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 tit for tat back and forth about this, that, or the other. You know, I I I harbor no animosity towards the sheriff. I think we should work together. But thi- this is, this is counterproductive. This kind of stuff causes hard feelings. It gets people pissed off. And when it's not based on fact, and there's allegations in here that are that are in fact not true, you know, do you think that's going to make me feel positively about working with the sheriff? Now, I will work with her, because that's my job. But these kinds of things are a problem. And I and I have, believe you me, I have gone out of my way to not say cast any stones towards her department or say anything about her people. It's, she she's a professional, you know, that's her shot. But this, in my opinion, is some kind of stunt. And I don't know what the what the end game is on it. But I'm here to tell you that my only interest is to make this the Leadville Police Department into a quality agency that has stability, people that are that are thoroughly trained to do the job well and serve the community of Leadville. And I'm going to leave it at that. Unless you have any more questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from city council? Because there's a lot in this letter to to unpack.
I don't have any questions, but I have some thoughts.
Please.
Um, I also was very disappointed by this letter. I find that the petty swipes and the lack of professionalism in the letter is unfortunately par for the sheriff's course. But I am disappointed that the county commissioners signed off on this letter without demanding some edits. While I think the topic of city reimbursement to the county for services provided is absolutely worth discussing and absolutely worth addressing. Having that request encased in, you know, just this morass of 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 unprofessionalism is, I am just really disappointed the commissioner signed off on it. But like I said, I don't think that is unsurprising coming from the sheriff. And if she will be the one to write this letter that will go out to the households, I would highly recommend that everyone, both of you, review it carefully. As she has a history of not coming off so well in the written word.
I I I would, I I'm not going to sign off on it until I read it and see what she's got to say. And and I I would even, just a suggestion, but I I would suggest that the that the council review it too. Or, you know, or, you know, or at the very least have an opportunity to check it out and see just what is 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 proposed to be put out there before it actually does. Because you may, you may think of something to see it from a different angle. You know, like you did earlier, you know, it's, you know, I I think that that should be a collective decision. And and I'm 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 comfortable reviewing it and all that, but I I would like to have some other folks take a look at it too, just to make sure that that you think that the community is going to be okay with it.
Any other questions or comments regarding the letter?
I have a comment, Mayor. Will, just a quick question first, commissioners. Commissioner, how many years have you served as a public servant in your career as a police, in the in the police force, in one way, shape, or form?
Over twenty years.
Over twenty years. So I would think that if I was to receive something, working for the federal government myself, working there for over twenty years myself, I would, I would think that this would come as a gut punch. And I understand your how you can take this personally. And and I will just say this is, there is a reason why the windshield of a car is bigger than the rearview mirror. Right? It's because clear vision in front. You got a little thing, a postage stamp to look in the back. And I really hope that Mayor and everybody here looks at this letter, it's October 13th, 2021. If it was Friday the 13th, it'd probably be better served, because I want this letter to be the lowest point that the city and county has been in ever when it comes to serving our entire citizens when it comes to law enforcement, period. This is, this is our ground level. I don't want it to go any lower than this. And when you talk about duty, you talk about respect and integrity, your pride, you know, the teamwork that you're trying to create, right? This is all important to start moving forward, looking out that front window and have that little postage stamp in the rear. We kind of stopped it, he said, she said. There's probably some half truths, she's hurt, you're hurt, everybody, there's there's work to be done. And I want everybody to stop that and focus on what's important, and that's serving our community in this function, right? And so I mean, it's tough. You're in a new, you're in a new position. I would just say, when I'm faced with adversity, and there's somebody that, for whatever reason, I don't get along with very well, or for whatever reason, is just rubbing it the wrong way, I have a new best friend. And I'd I'd really encourage both you, the mayor, and everybody in here to really reach across that aisle and become starting those those relationships and serious, real rooted relationships where it's not at face value and you start with commonalities between each other. You have a family, she has a family. If that's the basic level that we have to start with, that's where you have to start and reach across and start sewing that rift up, because we are at the very bottom of a very big rift. And we have to start patching it up and bringing us together for our community. And that's all I got to say about that.
I agree with you, Max, but I'm going to be mad for a little while yet.
You can be mad, I don't like the water either.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to leave it alone. Trust is something that's earned. Okay? And nobody is going to trust somebody just because. And I came in in this job with no harboring, no ill will toward the sheriff's department. You know, I I'm completely neutral. I'm I'm here to to rebuild the Leadville Police Department and make this a good, good place to work. So this, to me, it was stunning, quite frankly, because there there, I have no, I harbor no animosity towards them. And for them to, for her to come off like this is something that is going to take, it it's not going to take me time to repair, it's going to take her time to repair. The ball's in her court. Okay, she's she's shown me that I that I can't trust her. Now, over time, maybe that'll change. But and but I'm here to say I will work with her, because that's my job. But tru- trust is something that's earned over time. But trust is something that's earned over time. And to, to start off, just, I mean, I'm only like two and a half months into my tenure? And it hit me with something like this? Come on, you know, let's be real, let's be professionals. We, you know, we're all trying to, trying to accomplish the same thing, which is provide public safety to this community. And that should be the focus for all of us, not interneeces and rivalries and he said, she said, and all this other stuff. You know, there's bigger things out there. Let's start thinking about creative ways to provide public safety? To, to fill that, that, you know, that time before we can hopefully get some people on board here and trained.
I have a question and a couple of comments. Um, Mayor, what was, if any agreement? It, it seems like it was somewhat intentional, correct me if I'm wrong. It seems like it was somewhat intentional that we knew we were going to have some shortages on the police force? And that the sheriff would be taking on some of the extra, especially night duty? I'm actually not sure, I shouldn't conjecture, but take on some of the extra law enforcement in the community? Is that true?
That, that is absolutely true, and I'm glad you asked that question. Because I, I feel like I've had a very good relationship with Sheriff Reyes. I mean, personally, I like her. And Hal and I have disagreed on this. I still trust her, even though I think she went into this very frustrated and misinformed on, on some topics. Um, I think that there is, there's plenty of room for improvement in the relationship. And two of the county commissioners were in the room today and they got the message. Uh, but to your point, I told her, this is like four or five months ago, I said, whatever you need, okay? To cover us, we will cover in terms of the cost. All you have to do is let me know what it is. And so to that point.
Would be an invoice to the city to, to pay.
And we did get one about a week ago and I okayed it immediately and we paid it. So the point is that, that they're, in their defense, you know, they're busy too. They're tasked with, with an impossible task of taking care of this community. They're part of the community and, and ours and, and that's reciprocal. We have to respond both in the city and the county. Um, we're both in a really bad spot. And so they probably simply haven't had time to document. And I told them today, I said, don't feel like you have to document everything. If you want to give me an approximation of times and costs, I will honor that. You know, but so your point is extremely well taken. I've had that conversation several times with, with Sheriff Reyes and with the county commissioners over, let's say, the last six months. And the message has always been clear for me.
Yeah. Um, and was in, was that, I, I do think that does highlight. So I also don't love the package this was delivered in, right? There's a lot of unnecessary and hurtful and divisive things set in here. There are some useful messages, I think, which are, we probably do need a written agreement, right? And it, um, does that exist or is that something we're working on?
It was in draft form about six months ago and it's one of those things that got on the back burner. Uh, but it, it was in the works then.
Yeah.
And it just has never been complete. So you're, I, again, I agree.
Yeah.
We should have been writing and it should be a two way street.
Absolutely. Um, I think another, uh, message in here is that the sheriff is, is facing, the sheriff's department is facing their own shortages and um, that's a little bit of a heads up, right? That, um, that they're going to be spread thin as well. And then there is some interesting information regarding things they will, it sounds like they will stop doing. I mean, it implies that they will stop helping local fire and medical first responders? And helping maintain the quality of life in Leadville?
Yeah, Commissioner Edwards and I also had that conversation. It's not the option, but my state statute, you know, they, they have to serve and protect. It's the same, same for both organizations. It doesn't matter what kind of bluster is in there.
Yeah.
That's not the real.
Okay. It seems like those, those could have been brought to us in a pretty simple way and certainly a much more diplomatic way. But I do agree that if we can work on those things, it would probably improve that relationship, right? And lastly, I do just really want to commend you, Commissioner Edwards? For the recruiting efforts you've been doing and what you presented to us first prior to this letter. Um, it's creative, it's innovative. It's by the community, for the community, and that feels really good to me as a, as a citizen and a representative. Um, I'm really excited to see where that goes and thank you for bringing that energy and that project to Leadville.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question and a comment.
Yes.
Um, first, I just want to say that I want to assure you that, uh, you have my support and I take everything the sheriff says with a big bowl of salt. And secondly, I do read your reports and I do see that we also support the sheriff.
We do.
So is that within the, I mean, do we get paid when we support them?
No, we don't. To my understanding, we don't bill them, but there's been numerous, numerous occasions where we, we, our officers on the street help each other. And there, and I've, I've got, some of it is documented, not all of it is, because not every police call requires a, a report, you know, or they just may pull up and, you know, provide a presence? And, and not do any documentation associated with that. So that kind of stuff happens all the time. And I have, I've never given any of my staff any, any direction not to, to assist? Whether it's the sheriff's department or the state patrol or, you know, any officer out there or the fire department.
I suggest perhaps when your officers file a report? That they put in a little CYA paragraph that says sheriff deputy so and so assisted? So that you have.
They do that. Yeah, they do that.
Going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand the last few months have been a pretty extreme, uh, and different situation than our, um, law enforcement agencies have typically found themselves in. And I think perhaps that deserves to be addressed separately with a written agreement. But I certainly don't want to get into the case of where we're like billing each other every month for, we helped you, you helped us, you know? I, I, I just don't, I don't want to go in that direction. So if we write something formally, I think we should have this time limited? Thing over when Chief Portolos and Sheriff Reyes first said, we're going to help in, in, in the, in the dark times of the police department.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of this really took place upon the resignation of Chief Portolos. I will say, even before Chief Portolos left, uh, I was, I was, you know, building a relationship with the sheriff because it wasn't good then. I mean, I don't know how else to put it, it's been a dark time, the last seven or eight months. Uh, the, the, the very end of Chief Portolos's, I mean, I had a lot of faith in Chief Portolos. I, I was the one who, who wanted to hire her, who did hire her. I thought she was the wise, bright person for the job. But over time, that, that would just say, for, for whatever reason, ultimately it didn't work out. And, and I, I feel a sense of failure there, but, uh, but at the same time, it was also a very difficult time in terms of trying to think through the management of the police department, uh, under those circumstances. Once she left, uh, then Sheriff Reyes, Reyes and I, you know, were meeting on a pretty regular basis. She, she offered her support, I accepted it. Um, I appreciated that, I'll appreciate it always. Um, and we, we agreed to the, to the, you know, repayment of services when, when they had to cover when we were not available. Uh, we did start a, a MOU between the, the city and county over that actually was in the city and the sheriff's house. Because remember, the sheriff's office actually doesn't work for the county. It's an elected, it's an elected office. And so the, the relationship there is very different, uh, than in the city. Uh, I'm sorry, so I'm digressing, there's, there's, there are a lot of things going on here, but I would say this. Uh, Commissioner Edwards has given me hope for the future. If we succeed, we're going to succeed together. And if we fail, we're going to fail together, but, uh, but we plan to succeed.
It's, it's, it's a time right now in, in law enforcement for innovation and forward thinking. The old ways of doing things are not going to stand up in today's world. The young people that, that are coming into this line of work are very, very different from, from my generation. And the things that, that drew Pete, young people like me to this job 20 years ago? It, it's not going to fly anymore. People want to, want, they want to have a say. Young people want to see creativity. They want to do, you know, it's, it's not about just driving around carrying guns and ripping and tearing through town. It's, it's, it's more, there's a lot more to this job. And so we, 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 and when I say we, I mean collectively, the entire police work group across the country? We have to, we have to look at things differently. We have to be more innovative. We have to, our recruiting efforts can't, the old way of doing things is not going to fly anymore. And in a community like this, you know, our best interest is to take the time and the effort? To, to find people that are a good fit for the, for this organization and the community. And so I, I appreciate your patience and support. Um, we're, we've had, I've better luck than I thought we would, you know, to date. And I'm going to continue with this, you know, and I, I, I eat lunch with those ladies down there at Full Circle every, every, every Thursday, you know? And I, I, I want people that, that are, that are invested in Leadville, that are living here because they want to live here? And they want to serve the community in a positive way.
Anything else for Commissioner Edwards? Thank you for the conversation. My next up, we have the fire department report. Dan was not able to be here this evening. Any thoughts or questions on the fire department report? I would tell you why you're looking it over. Uh, I was out on Sunday and went to the training center and they, there must have been 30 firemen out there in training exercises. Uh, it was pretty neat, you know, they have the academy out there and Captain McCann was out there. And I just went out and, and talked to them and, and kind of looked, looked around to see what they were doing and their latest projects. And it was quite a scene. That training center is really going to make a difference, uh, in our ability to take care of our community. I'm, I'm pretty tickled. Okay, if there are no questions onward and, and upward to the street department? Uh, I was expecting Tyler to be here tonight, but I don't see him. So I apologize for that, I would, I asked him to be here. Um, right now, the street department has been doing a lot for the county for the last month. As an example, and we had talked about, we were, we were supplying people to help them with their paving projects. Uh, we didn't get around to ours, but that's, that's a different topic. We're out now, uh, we have almost our entire crew, I think four of our, of, of the five people. Uh, we have one person on vacation. Uh, we're out at half moon, uh, supportive of the county in their work out there. They, they regrade and have put down class four road base on half moved, uh, in, in conjunction with, uh, the forces to redo that road. So, um, perfect time of the year for us to be doing it because, you know, we don't have, I've got a list of things I'd like for them to be doing. But this is more important and, uh, but I think the point I'm trying to make is we really work hard to work in concert with the county wherever we can, whenever we can. Whenever they need us, we're there and we expect the same reciprocal from them, especially in Leadville. Any questions about the street department report? Next up, animal shelter. We have Kaylin and Brenda here. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
We're also finishing the Shelter Health Week course, so that goes over everything we do as managers from intake, protocols, danger assessments, um, even maybe the nature of calls. On the thirteenth, we went to the raw as well. Um, it's really important that when we bring dogs into the community, we're making sure they're safe for everybody, so well as very whole, very forward shelter. Um, they have a lot of adoption of other facing Indonesia that were associated with other dogs and social people. We had one dog that was gonna be placed for adoption, so we pulled some of their highly adoptable dogs. One of which has already been adopted. We've had people come from Colorado Springs, Utah, and even outside of Georgetown, including dogs who are pleading to come with dogs. We're working with the high school on starting an internship program, so we can have both animal care internship program and admin internship program. And we're working on, we'll be your grant, so currently we're wanting to be your grant, that's gonna range from twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars, um, depending on where they give us. So I'll submit that one the twenty-fifth of this month and will hear back by November fifteenth and then they finalize in December. We're also looking at a feral cat trap neuter vaccine and return grant, so that would help us this spring. Though this last winter wasn't very intense, we had a lot of feral dogs and kittens being born under trailers. Um, the Fire Department came and helped us out with one such situation. So with this grant program, we would be able to trap the feral cats that are moving in the woods. Neuter them, bathe them, so they aren't able to keep reproducing and also give them vaccines so that they're not getting sick or ill. A lot of times if they're already brought into the shelter, we do that anyway, to hold up to them and drop them out in foreign cats. Um, but with the amount of feral cats that we've been seeing, we would not have enough candles to keep them in our facility. Nor do we have enough people that will want foreign cats that we'd be able to adopt them out, so that's why it would be a return program. And then the next one should say, uh, twenty. The next one should be a twenty twenty-two little cross vaccine in my relationship. Um, so last year we were fortunate in Dr. Jeff and his team coming up to do the little cross vaccination vaccines. They were able to do it this year. Um, I do know Diane Pet Hood has something to do with it. And then we have grant funds to continue for next year. We have a current animal account. We've included some pictures of the dogs on the bottom that we have recently gotten. And then our numbers in September are highlighted.
Your numbers uh, for revenue, whether it's September or otherwise, don't, don't actually make much sense to me and I'm not sure why I'm not understanding them. Uh, your, your totals. What are those reflective of? Because they don't seem to reflect above the addition.
Um, it is the summer for, there are two that are missing, so we're no longer um, doing the dog reeves, um, that we're thinking of, that we're looking for this year. So it has to be a vet back into the reeves vaccine. We did that for a few months in the beginning. Um, but it should put more barriers in people getting their dogs back, so that line's hidden, so that could be throwing off some of the, some of the numbers, but
Just, just look at those again. Uh, they, they don't seem to, to, to tell me the story, so that's all. I would like to say, I was in the, the, uh, the Animal Shelter the other day, Brenda showed me around. Uh, it is neat, it is clean, it is well organized. I was so impressed. I, and and the new floor, of course, is, is a huge part of that, but that, but that's not it. Floor, no floor. Um, I, I, I certainly was under the impression that, that it is being well, well run, so thank you for that. And also, all those dogs were so friendly. Every one of those new dogs was like, you know, you wanted to take it home. I didn't. Any other questions to the Animal Shelter? Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Um, liquor licensing, this is just a informational uh, piece. If you have any thoughts on it, please say so.
Is there an inspirational piece?
I didn't say that. I said informational. I might have said inspirational, depends on, on how you look at it. Look, there's a bar. You know, our next city council meeting.
No. You think I'm mouthy now?
Well, you know, we don't have to go to a bar. We can, we can serve right here. We can do shots on every agenda. This isn't recorded, is it? We have a building report. Uh, this is, uh, Paul Clarkson gets this to us each month, always kind of, and he shows no
I have this little comment here, not everyone thinks this is good.
Yeah. Next up, the sales tax comparisons report. Uh, I think you, you're already aware of that. Uh, we continue on a very strong trend, I think that would be mildly, but uh, well, I keep saying, we'll see. I, I think there has to come a time when it at least levels out, but if it levels up, levels out at a higher level, that's okay. But I don't. When's it gonna level out, Donna?
I don't know.
We've been saying this for three years.
I know, and I've been told our next check is even bigger yet, so.
I think once international travels kind of back, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Uh, financials? Any questions on the financials, Donna? Any, any comments?
I was really just gonna comment on, um, I don't have a lot to comment on, but um, the one li- line item that concerns me, I guess, is the property tax. Um, it's shown here that we got still thirty-seven thousand out there that we haven't collected on. Um, our October payment was a thousand dollars. So I'm just really worried that we're not gonna get much more of it.
And yet the projection for next year is about eighty thousand dollars higher than the projection for, for last year.
Yes, so. I mean, I'm not sure, I don't know, it's just, it's concerning to me.
Who's that projection from?
The assessor. The assessor's office sends us a certificate of valuation every year. And I will say that, um, there was sixty-five hundred dollars that was in an abatement on that tax, that certification of value, so, but even at six, six thousand dollars, you know, we're still, we're still lacking about thirty thousand. And we've got three months left, or four months, I guess, but.
Do they pay any of that in arrears, or is that typically paid on the month that it, that it?
It, it is in the arrears, um, I would assume. I mean, I'm not quite sure. When I talked to Patrick many, many, many years ago, I mean, his statement that I get from him, I'll get the September statement in October. Which, so I'm assuming that that's property tax taken in on, in September.
So we could have three months of property tax still forthcoming, although it's not looking like it's gonna be another thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the last one was a thousand dollars, so it just seems like a little, but. Um, other than that, I just, I, I do wanna tell you that, you know, I've been busy trying to get, um, all these renewals done, you know, for workers' comp and health insurance and all that kind of stuff. And I do have some good news on workers' comp. We've went into a lower E-mod, so it sounds like we're gonna be
That's what happened to me.
Saving a lot of money on, well, we'll see, I still gotta get them some numbers, but, um, it looks like we're gonna be saving some money on workers', workers' comp. So that's some good news, although our employee health insurance went up five percent, so. It kinda. But other than that, I really have nothing else. I looked, um, every department, I think, has had some unforeseen expenditures, which they all do, but this year it seems like all of them were over ten thousand dollars. Um, you know, vehicle repairs, flooring for the animal shelter, you know, all that stuff, so, but they all, they're all in pretty good shape, so.
All of them despite that are, are at or under budget, except for the animal shelter. And so I've been thinking about that, you know, the animal shelter budget is just, it's important. I mean, but it's, it's the smallest budget we have, so it doesn't concern me too much, except I need to sit down with Caitlin and, and understand, is this the new reality? I guess it's, it's what I'm saying, because of her management and her adoption methodologies and and so it may be that the animal shelter expenditures simply are going to be higher in the future. And I don't know the answer to that yet.
Not all just the floors.
Uh.
It's not all just the floors.
If you look at their budget, if you look at the line items, it's uh, it's significant. But overall, i- i- in the big picture, it's not really all that significant.
I think part of it too has to do with experience and man, and to manage an animal shelter, which she has not done before. You know, there's gonna be a period where I'm sure she can, you know, learn more from you as far as budgeting and things to look for, and it's a process, you know, so. Yeah, she's, this is her first year and not even, she hasn't even been in the job a year, so.
I agree, and I would also say I have not spent a significant amount of time sitting down with her and really working on it, so.
So I, I think that, you know, in all fairness, it may take a little time and, but it has been very hectic. There'll be a lot of other things as well, so.
But I would say the result is.
Yeah, the floors look great, yeah, yeah. No, I, I, when I went by, I was like, wow, this looks wonderful.
Okay.
I have a question on the fire expenditures and revenues. So back when, uh, we bought that tender so that to increase our fire department's ability to respond to wildfires elsewhere and like this one's going to be very profitable, we can pay down the tender really fast. I'm wondering, Donna, where do payments for our department's response to outside wildfires? Where do they show up under the revenues? Do they come in as a lump sum periodically throughout the year or? Um, because I can see all the wildfire or wildland supplement, supplemental program expenditures, wildfire deployment, employee payments, you know, on the expenditure side. I'm just wondering where the.
The revenue, that's what you're asking for, is on page twenty-two.
Yep.
And it's gonna be the Forest Service payments buyer.
Okay.
So yeah, this year, well, to September, we have forty-eight thousand, but we did just receive an eighty-three thousand dollar in October.
So that's just sort of a sporadic.
Sporadic, yeah, it all depends. I mean, um, Bo Nickman is usually the ones that files those, but he also goes on wildfire deployment, so it depends on when he files.
Got it.
And it's usually pretty quick after he gets it filed, but.
Used to take about six months, but it's gotten much better than last, well, maybe just last year.
Yeah. Cool, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the bills. Any questions about the bills?
I have a question. About the bills, under the, uh, let me find it, under Police Department, um, page five of the bills. Check number seven, six, oh, one, four, towing of stolen vehicles, sixteen hundred dollars. Where were we towing this to or from, or am I completely out of touch with how much it cost to tow?
Well, it was in storage for, and maybe you know how many days.
Yeah, the, what happened with that is.
The, the vehicle in question belonged to the brother of a gentleman up that lives up here, and his brother passed away. And then the vehicle was stolen and, and then recovered and confiscated and, and held as evidence. And the, the, um, the, the elderly gentleman who, who owns this vehicle, it, it was all in probate. This guy's, um, his brother's property. And so it sat there for a long time uh, accruing these storage charges as a result of it being a stolen, you know, recovered stolen. And the, the elderly gentleman that, that owned, that nominally owns it, uh, doesn't have the financial means to, um, pay that kind of money, you know? So that's why we decided to go ahead and pay it, so he could get his, get this vehicle back, because it was technically his vehicle.
It had just been stored as evidence while.
Yeah.
It was all going through probate.
Exactly.
It was thirty dollars a day was, was the storage charge.
Yeah, it was, it was a.
It on my lot.
We didn't, I, I mean, just, you know, we had a little, some mercy, we, you know, we didn't wanna stick this, this old, old guy with a
Yeah.
sixteen hundred, and it wasn't his fault that it got stolen.
Yeah, I would say this, commission members have talked about this, it's actually been on our on our radar for some time. We need a city impounded. We, we, we don't have a great place for that, but what I've, what I've talked about is, you know, we have Elm Street Park that has this gigantic prison fence around it. I hate that fence. Um, and I wanna see if we can move that out to the Eleventh Street City property, at least for the time being, have an impound area.
The fence.
That we fenced in, impacted, and by, by law, it has to be fenced in and, and, and locked, so I, I want to try and get that done this next summer, so we have our own impound area. We used to share an impound area with the sheriff years ago, and the sheriff, uh, and this was before Sheriff Reyes, this was Sheriff Finsky, and they decided they didn't wanna share that impound with us anymore. It was out at the landfill. And so we were cut off from, from use of that impound. Uh, just a little bit of history. So I, it is my intention somehow to get us an impound, fenced in impound yard.
Otherwise, we pay thirty dollars a day to.
Well, typically, that would be paid for by the person who goes to pick up their vehicle in this particular case.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
The police department decided to have mercy upon somebody.
Sounds complicated.
Yes, but always.
Mary, I have a question in the Street Department. Just, it, it's just interesting. It says the twelve corporate corporations under supplies, it's on page six. Trash bags, six of them costing three hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents. Kind of trash bags are they?
Those are boxes of trash bags.
Yes, they're, they're cases, but they're for Main Street.
Boxes.
Titanium foil.
And they've gotta be a little, little bit more durable so that they're not picking up trash off the street.
Well, the daughter, we had the. We'll have to say the table we paid for last month is turned out very beautiful. Isn't that thing gorgeous? Now, we're gonna, the other ones upstairs, we're going to, we're gonna reorganize the, the coffee room. Actually, we're gonna get to, you know, we have the coffee room this evening, but we need to reorganize that coffee room. We're actually gonna put that old table in there. I've been trying to give it away. I've tried, generation, full circle, C four, county, anybody who I thought could use it, and nobody wanted it, so I decided I, I just can't, I just can't bring myself to throw it away, so we'll use it up in that, up in that room. It'll dominate the room, but it'll, it'll be okay.
We'll say maybe we could afford a clock at some point.
What do we need a clock for?
I can't tell if it's daytime or nighttime.
He didn't say anything about bedtime tonight.
It's not bedtime, he has to, he has to go to bed so we can go fishing.
That's a bedtime.
Okay, any other questions about the bills? I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember for Gency moves to approve paying the bills.
Oh, thanks.
Any other discussion? Owen Fever, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Thank you very much. At this time, we have a presentation. This is the quarterly update for the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation, if you would please. The podium is all yours.
Thank you very much, Council, for letting us give you your update tonight. Um, I'm ready to tape, um, probably as well. Um, it'll be short. You guys have in your packets, um, our, um, pictures of we're mainly talking about three relationships. So we've got, what we've accomplished so far. Um, we've got the south elevations during and after, that was accomplished, uh, in the summer of twenty twenty. If you remember that, sure. Then this year, uh, what were you seeing this? Uh, the front, all scattered and gone, and this is looking for the others, and it's pretty incredible. What was the conversation? Um, they're still working on the, the front end of the season's computer, the plastic is over. So they're still completing some of the work for it around that. And, um, they'll, they were able to complete on the underside, uh, cleaning the red for the ghost signs, um, and they'll do the painting of that next year, so they've got to pull the So the next thing that we're, um, really fundraising for, ready grants for, is the north and east side elevations. So here's our, the four. After picture next year. And, um, so currently, um, the south and west elevations were one point five million, and there's sources of the grant funding that we had for that, plus the contribution from the city of Leadville. Thank you very much for twenty thousand dollars. Um, and then we've got the north and east elevations, we need one point three million to do that. And we've got four grants pending, um, plus the fifty thousand that we were able to secure in the information. So, or three grants pending, plus, um, we have, uh, three hundred thousand in state tax credits that we're gonna leverage to do that. So that's kind of where we're at with the exterior renovation, uh, renovation. If you guys have any questions, we kind of wanna come and do this quarterly and just do kind of a small snippet of, this is definitely not everything, but straight.
What timeframe or something for this, for this newest, you know, grant funding effort, uh, one point two million dollars, in what timeframe are some of these grants, uh, likely or hopefully going to come through?
Um, and that is a good question. Um, Jenny knows more about the exact, I think, I think one of them, and I, I couldn't say one of them's December. I think that there's even one this month that we're supposed to hear on. Um, but, I mean, I think that we, we get to know by January or February whether we're able to proceed or not. Uh, based on these, or if not, we're comfortable with other places to come with the complete funding, because we have to start, you know, hiring the contractors and stuff like that to be, to continue. Um, but just to know for sure, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, just, mostly just, you know, uh, being inquisitive. A, a couple things. I, I was in the Tabor Opera House last week and we were, we were turning the water off, which you normally do in the fall, but this year is different. The, the water is gonna stay on the lower floor of the building, uh, and the, and Park Bill, uh, actually asked us to not turn off the water you know, going to the street, because they didn't wanna turn that tap off. Um, and so that's what we've done this year, for the first time in, who knows, maybe, maybe sixty or seventy years. Uh, there's gonna be water in the Tabor Opera House, uh, during winter, and, uh, they put a number of heaters in there. Uh, I mean, it's not the complete job, but it's, it's progress in terms of heating, uh, the Tabor Opera House, uh, you know, appropriately for right now, because they're, they're not really having the vents in a, in a way of time. Um, so that was great. And then Carl helped, helped us put a flag up. In fact, well, he helped by filming mostly. Uh, putting the new flag up on top of the Tabor Opera House and, and I purchased a, a flag that was made out of different material that is supposed to hold up better. We'll see. I mean, I, you know, I'll believe it when I see it. Any questions? I I I will tell you that that it feels like the 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 Tabor Opera Preservation Foundation. Has really gained momentum in terms of restoration. And I I think it stalled because in me, I mean, I think events need to happen, don't get me wrong, you know, I've always felt that way. But I think that the law of events has actually given the board the ability to focus on the restoration. Rather than events, and, uh, that seems to be working, so thank you.
Yeah, well, let's let's hope we don't have a reason for a law.
Thank you very much. At this time, uh, Chris John is on the line, uh, we are going to go into executive session, we're to go upstairs to do that. Uh, and it will just be city council with Christiana on the Zoom, everybody else is welcome to to hang out. I don't think we're going to be in the executive session for a long time, but those five things last words. I know, I know. At this time, um, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Now I'm moved to go into executive session, three seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, can. Um, did, Mayor, can we use the motion in the script? Because we have to say to the appropriate section of the statute before going into executive session.
Okay, thank you, as usual, I'll be in a cowboy, okay. Mayor Lobby, uh, moves to go into executive session under section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B. Of the Colorado Revised Statutes for Legal Advice Concerning Deed Restrictions Related to the Rail Yard Phase Two P U D Application. I further move to reconvene the October nineteenth regular city council meeting. At the conclusion of the executive session, in order to proceed with the remaining items on the agenda for the October nineteenth regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Yeah, in seconds.
Thank you, any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp Green, yes, council member for Gensky.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Council member Gowing.
Yes.
Council member Laritzen.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we are going to, I think we'll take a a five minute break. And then meet in the upstairs, uh, executive board room. Financially, that was. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just saying. That was the.
So I have another reason to be disappointed in the county.
It is common in in in. Okay, the time is now eight twelve P M, the executive session has been concluded. Participants in the executive session were, we'll start with you, Max. Max for Dancy.
Tim Hill.
Disco Tharp.
Greg Lobby.
Dana Green.
Jane Gowing.
Tracy Loretson.
And also our assistant city attorney, Christiana McCormick. Um, and there were no other city staff or participants in the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters. Not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session. Or that any improper action occurred during the executive session violation of the open meetings law. I ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to reconvene the October nineteenth regular meeting.
Yeah, I'm moved to reconvene the October nineteenth meeting, public meeting. Three seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Council member Laritzen.
Yeah.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Count, council member Gowing.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp Green.
Yes.
Council member for Gensy.
Yes.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
For the record, the October nineteenth regular meeting was reconvened at eight thirteen P M. Thank you very much. At this time, we have ordinance number nine, uh, series of twenty twenty one, uh, this will be a public hearing. And I will use the public hearing script, uh, to open the screen. This is an ordinance, uh, this is ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty, and ordinance conditionally approving a planned unit development of P U D overlay. Uh, district zoning for certain land known as the rail yard led bill phase two. And amending the official zoning map of the city, which council is considering on second reading. City council adopted this ordinance on first reading on August tenth, twenty twenty one. This ordinance was continued for second reading from September, uh, fourteenth, twenty twenty one because of additional information. That was being researched, uh, for the condition of approval, uh, regarding affordable housing. Uh, and deed restrictions, uh, from first reading of the ordinance. Before this is, uh, uh, because this is second and final reading of the ordinance, city council will follow these steps. First, I'll ask the city staff, give any presentation to provide any information that they have to city council about the ordinance. City council will have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next, I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time, and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Finally, council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Uh, at this time, I would ask, uh, for the staff presentation. Is there anything, uh, from staff, uh, Chris John?
Uh, Mayor, I will just say that, um, a a reminder that this. Ordinance was also continued from the October fifth meeting. Um, again, to negotiate, uh, with the developer on that deed restriction condition in the ordinance. Um, since then, we have been able to get a letter from the developer, uh, stating that the the developer will agree to. Enter into a development agreement with the city. Um, and, um, that development agreement will set out the deed restriction conditions. Uh, for, uh, the phase two of the rail yard. And, uh, the letter also, uh, says that if the property is subject to the deed restrictions aren't developed in seven years, then those. Restrictions would be lifted. Um, the developer also, uh, sent a second letter to the city. Um, including some more details about his thoughts on those terms and for the development agreement. And, um. Oh, no, and I was just going to say that, um, based on those further conversations, um, with developer, um, I do have some recommended. Uh, edits to the ordinance, um, if city council would like to consider them for the second reading.
Um, is that something we would, we would, uh, discuss the changes now or, uh, on at deliberation?
Um, you could, you could do both, Mayor. I could show you what the recommendations are now, and then you can discuss them during deliberations.
Uh, I think that would be good, uh, and we could have that before public comment, uh, if you would discuss the changes. Uh, the suggested changes, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Um, I will just, uh, it looks like I can't share my screen. So I will just state out loud what the changes would be. Um, so I recommend adding a few recitals to the ordinance regarding, um. Affordable housing, uh, since that is where the, um, request from city council about the deed restrictions for the. For phase two came from, um, so I suggest adding, uh, these three recitals. One, whereas the regional trend toward increasing house prices is resulting in inadequate supplies of affordable housing in Ludville. For low, moderate, and middle income households, which has a netic negative effect. On the ability of local employers to maintain an adequate workforce and adversely impacts the economy of the city. Um, two, whereas because land appropriate for residential development within the city is limited. It, it is essential that a reasonable proportion of such land be developed into housing units. That are affordable to low and moderate income residents and working people. And finally, three, uh, developer and the city have mutually agreed, as evidenced by a letter from the developer to the city dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty one. To incorporate affordable housing into the development on the property via deed restrictions. The terms of which will be set forth in a development agreement between the city and the developer. So I recommend adding those three recitals. And I also recommend changing condition H in the ordinance to state the following. The developer shall add the following statement to the applicable codes and regulations section of the phase two P U D. Development within the rail yard Ludville phase P U D, phase two P U D. Shall be subject to a voluntary development agreement between high country developers and the city to be executed by developer and city. As voluntarily agreed to by the developer through, uh, excuse me, by letter to the city dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty one. At the time the developer files a land development application for the phase two parcel. Outlet B, rail yard Ludville filing number one amendment number one minor subdivision plat. Such development agreement shall at a minimum include the requirement that at least five dwelling units shall be subject to city approved deed restrictions. For affordable housing as defined under Colorado law, and such restrictions shall be consistent. With community housing guidelines if such guidelines are adopted by the city prior to the applicant submission of such land development application. There you go. That is what I recommend.
Thank you very much, that that will, uh, that's very helpful, um, at this time, and we'll, we could have questions for staff. When we go to deliberation, but at this time, I would ask, uh, for public comment. Um, on. On this ordinance, and first I would ask for those people. Uh, well, actually, I'm not going to do that because a lot of the comments that we have are 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 really, uh, pretty benign in terms of being. For or against, they're just suggestions to city council, so I would ask for anybody, uh, who would like to comment. Um, on this ordinance, um, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment, please step forward. Introduce yourself and you have three minutes to speak, and then we'll read into the record, um, some of the comments, uh, that we also have.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak with you guys tonight. I sent you guys email last week, but. I also reached out to some surrounding communities to kind of learn if anybody have been in a situation like this. Um, unfortunately, I have not, um, but some of the things that I learned from other communities. About, um, requiring deed restriction in a P V, I just wanted to share that with you guys tonight. Um, some of the recommendations that I heard, um, from surrounding communities was that. In addition to requiring the units, um, be built by the developers. Um, that you should do something along the timeline like, they may produce two market rate units. Um, and then they have to produce the one, um, affordable unit before they get licenses. For additional market rate units, um, something that I don't think we've had discussed, um, but. We're perceiving, I think that may get to that point that you guys were concerned about. That, um, if the developer was threatening to speed, um, past that seven years that the property could. Switch back to them, so I think that that is, um, an industry standard that you guys might want to consider tonight. Um, another, another way to enforce it that I heard from another, um, community. Was that if after a certain time period. For years or whatever, um, they had not submitted a, um. A designs for these units that you wouldn't issue any other, um, building permits. So those are the two ways that I was able to hear, um, of how you could enforce him. Developing these units in the timely manner that you guys wanted him to. Um, and then, yeah, I just wanted to say. That, um. I don't under, I don't quite understand why the, the P U D negotiation. Is not enough to enforce it, um, and why we need this other agreement on top of it. If it is because. The community guidelines have not been approved yet, or because we don't have like inclusionary policy. Um, please talk to me so that we can like. Realistically outline how quickly we need to get something like that put in place. Uh, because I know this is painful for you guys, and, uh, it would save you guys a lot of time. Um, if you have to. That's all I have for tonight, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Tate, are you going to speak? Oh, Augustine. Ms. Ramírez.
And I appreciate all your comments and hard work that's come into this so far. Um, so a little bit of redundancy with what we see that first off, I'm a little bit confused by the legality of this. Development gentleman's agreement that would for some reason have more enforcement power than the, or more enforcement power for the de再加上. It's always been my understanding that the point of a P V is especially if you look back at phase one, that. Using this negotiation process is the point to have trade offs between the developments. Um, we didn't see the dangers of it in phase one, and which is kind of the purpose of mutual argument in phase two. Um, unfortunately, at this point, it appears to me like a little too late to look into this, but for future, I would strongly recommend looking into what the county has done, the gateway. Um, because they did go through a similar process where they used the P V to get what they wanted, and to, you know, have carrots for the developer as well. Um, obviously, that didn't go through as well, but looking at the county, what they did there as well as other communities. And during the P V process to get this thing sorted out, because it doesn't make a bunch of sense, anyways. And we have data that supports that we need this housing, we have to see all now. Um, and the city made concessions and allowing for increased density and decreased open space in order for the developer. To move forward with this project, which, what do we necessarily get from that, you know? Um, I think and I've definitely heard from other communities that it is reasonable to even request a simplified performance, so that he's not, you know. All this information, but some, and if the developer truly can't make it canceled, then he should be requesting, he or we. Should be requesting gap funding from the addition of housing to help out with that cost. Um, again, from what I understand, unless there's something in our code that is vastly different, these de再加上 should be legally upheld in the P V process. And because things might be too far along for that consideration, truly these units should be built as soon as possible, which I think we all talked about in our last meeting. Um, but given your seven years, makes a lot more sense in order to ensure that those units don't get turned over to the developer for market rated housing. Um, as you said in the last meeting, there's.
As you said in last meeting, there's complications with lower parcel that have slowed down the process on the city side. So giving the city or high country developers time to do that with this agreement. And then lastly, again, a little bit of redundancy. I realize that there isn't more room for, it doesn't feel like there's more room to develop within the city, however, if the pandemic has taught us anything, and you have no idea of the future. Additionally, there's a three amount per agree included in the cop plan that would, that could in fact be air next. And while this particular council is committed to finding housing solutions, requiring developers, there's no guarantee that all members will live in the future. If the legalities of this process hold up with the agreement having more weight than the P B, how can we ensure assure the community that we can get them housing through this process in the future? I would highly recommend considering adopting an inclusionary zoning policy that has those built in trade offs to guarantee a path to community housing. It costs you nothing except for initial change. It's basically the developer just has to deal with it initially unless they want some changes. It acknowledges that it's difficult to build here with those trade offs, and it would also save you so much time, such as continuations of the meeting in the future. Again, thank you for all that you do in your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ramírez.
Hey Tate, once again, this time I'm wearing my hat as the chair of the housing coalition here in Lake County. And I just, I'm pretty excited about the prospect of us getting some affordable units on the ground. And so I just want to voice my support for this and from the coalition's perspective and for, you know, five years of coalition building and listening to the community and what it needs and also wants. And so I really hope that this will go through. I like the additions that your term has suggested. Because I, I mean, this is something that that needs to be done, and we do need to have the de-restrictions in there again. To, you know, help the community that the developer is getting something for extra density and that sort of thing. And I think it's time that we do have a development that that does have some affordable housing. We've heard from, you know, the police department tonight too, saying how they, it's hard to recruit people because they don't have they can't recruit them outside and all that kind of stuff. I'm telling you, as you already know, but I just want to say from a coalition standpoint, we've heard it over and over over the years, how much we, how this is a drop in the bucket, but it's a start. And I really hope that this goes through as written and that you guys can support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tate.
Excuse me, there's someone on Zoom. If I can speak.
Who, who's, who would like to speak? Okay, Jamie, please. So you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Lobby. Thank you, City Council. Good evening. My name is Jamie Seifer. I live at thirteen hundred Harrison. I've spoken to you before about handful of things. I would like to echo the comments of the people in the public who spoke before me who are in favor of making sure that this deed restriction addition for phase two of the rail yards definitely goes through and happens as soon as possible. This is definitely a problem and, you know, it's I agree especially with Augustina, who mentioned an inclusionary zoning policy to think about for the future. I think that would kind of streamline some of this and bake in creating more of these units with future development projects. As we know, the only way that we're really going to solve this problem is adding many units quickly and affordably. So I appreciate the amended language to the P U D tonight. I hope that goes through, and I thank you for your support of future housing projects.
Thank you, Mr. Seifer. Is there anybody else on the zoo who would like to speak regarding ordinance? Okay, seeing I have, in addition to Christie's letter that she sent us, I have four letters here that I think we should read into the, into the record, two of the identical. They both have the exact same thing. That's from Sarah Edwards and Susan Fishman, and they both say, City Council and Mayor Lobby, urge you to ensure that phase two of the rail yards includes five de-restricted units as previously discussed. These need to be built as soon as possible as our community is in desperate need of housing. Thank you. And of course, those two are identical. That was from Susan Fishman and certain groups. Next up, we have Gabby Vol, who is the chair of our planning zoning. Hi, Diana. Can't make it to the city, to the council meeting, but I have a comment about the rail yards B U D. To city council, I am sorry I'm not able to attend in person tonight to give my remarks. It is my understanding that there have been some hiccups in holding the rail yards developer accountable to the five deed restricted units that P N Z recommended. I urge you to be creative and find a way to legally hold, to hold to this. We may need to look at peer communities to find other examples of P U Ds with conditional approvals for deed restricted housing. I don't think it is a non-starter. P U Ds are made to be flexible. Why can't we be flexible on what kinds of housing and for whom can be in the P U D? Let's keep pushing on this. We need to try all different ways to keep and build and acquire permanent affordable housing for our community. So, so each opportunity is worth the fight. Thank you, Gabby Vol. The last one is from Jeff Fiedler, County Commissioner, your mayor and council. I unfortunately may not be able to attend council meeting tonight and respectfully ask these points be raised as part of the public input on this agenda item. Regarding the agenda item on the five affordable housing units in rail yards phase two, I wanted to offer some thoughts on how to incentivize the developer to complete these units in a timely manner. I think we all share the desire to ensure that these units get built. I realize that there may be limits to what can be put in place, and I have not undertaken any legal review of these options. These are suggestions. First, I think that extending the timeframe beyond five years is counterproductive. That is not very many units, and they should be built on the same timeframe as the overall phase to development. Ten years seems way too long. Furthermore, having the plots revert to developer, if not built in five years, seems to create a perverse incentive for delay. Here are the thoughts on proactive incentives for the affordable housing units to be built properly. Have the lots transferred to the city or housing authority, if in existence, if not built within five years or the timeframe. Require with, if not built within five years. Require the developer to file building permits for these five units within three years or other timeframe, but the intent is to require them to be permitted two years before they are supposed to be built. Consider not issuing other market rate building permits until those affordable units are permitted and or built. Intent here is to ensure that the affordable units not always end up at the end of the building pipeline. Without some incentive and or recourse, it would seem the city has very little leverage to ensure that these units materialize. Thank you. Those are all the comments that I have. Ms. Kiss is, are there any of the comments?
No.
Great.
Is Jamie Chan still up, or is it, does he have another?
Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing. Who moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing? Jensen seconds. Any other discussion? All in fever, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all. We're in favor. Okay, at this time, a city council is in deliberation. We can ask questions of staff and each other.
I have a question. And I don't know who knows the answer to this, but who in this particular development submits the the building permit request? Is it the builder to whom I believe the developer sells the lots to?
It is, yes. They would have to submit their, their plans for the building to the building department. Actually, they, they come to us first, they submit the plans to us, and we have to go through just, just the very cursory stages of saying, okay, it needs setbacks, height requirements, if there's any historic preservation issues, then, then we can comment on that too. And once we've gone through our, you know, our process doesn't take very long, then we forward it to the building department. You know, but they, they're supposed to let us have, you know, first look.
We've received a number of suggestions and comments and with some questions of why can't we just demand these units? Why do we have to have this mutually agreeable or mutual agreement, voluntary agreement? Would it be, do you think it would be appropriate or useful to have Christiana speak to that, just to, especially for the people in the audience?
I do think it'd be very helpful for, for the misunderstandings that have been, you know, a part of this whole conversation. Christiana, can you take a moment and explain to us why we have to have the additional voluntary agreement with the developer?
I sure can. So the reason is because in state law, under section twenty nine, twenty two oh three of the Colorado revised statutes, it says that no local government shall impose any discretionary condition upon a land use approval unless the condition is based upon duly adopted standards that are sufficiently specific to ensure that the condition is imposed in a rational and consistent manner. So what that means is that here, because the city doesn't have any affordable housing or inclusionary housing regulations that it has adopted for all new developments or citywide, then this is a discretionary condition, not based on any city code regulation. So that means that in order to go ahead with the, these deed restrictions, then we need to get a voluntary agreement with the developer in order to move this forward.
Christiana, does that mean that P U Ds are only flexible to the extent that we apply conditional use permit? Make things conditional use?
Yeah.
Current zoning?
Yeah, right. So P U Ds are certainly, certainly flexible. It gives developers room to have development standards that aren't exactly consistent with other portions of the city code. So for example, here, the rail yard property is zoned commercial. And so if without the P U D, the developer would have to comply with all of those commercial zoning requirements, right? And so with the P U D, it does allow a lot of flexibility. However, this specific thing that is you know, outside of those bounds of the P U D. Because a P U D is always tied to the comprehensive plan and, you know, generally tied to the city code and everything. So those are kind of the standards that we apply for P U Ds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Christiana or any other discussion inside the city council's deliberation?
Well, I just want to hear, make sure I'm hearing this correctly, is that all points considered, in the future, we should probably prioritize an inclusionary or affordable housing policy that can be then put into our city code. Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that's a suggestion. And I would tell you, I've had just had this conversation with Councilmember Green. The county about three years ago spent quite a bit of time considering inclusionary zoning. And they came to the conclusion that they didn't want to do that, and we can discuss with them certainly in some detail. It was my impression that they decided not to do that because it really put developers, especially in this marketplace, at risk for not developing, and, and that was their concern. I'm not saying they're right or wrong. I'm saying that was kind of the thought process around the rejection of inclusionary zoning. And I'll tell you, you know, the, the building department at the county put enormous time in, into the, the subject of inclusionary zoning, and I think there was a lot of maybe disappointment, if, if that's the right word in, in not having produced any kind of ordinance.
Although that was three years ago. It's a little different now.
Well, and they have, they have a lot of land on which, you know, development can take place. Gateway, which Augustin referred to is a classic example. They're talking about upwards of four hundred homes out there, if, if it ever happens. I mean, I don't know whether it's going to happen or not. It's, 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 it's been, been pushed forward about three different times with three different possible developers. Who knows what, but that's a couple hundred acres out there that, that really could be developed. If, if anybody ever puts it all together. So, yeah, I think the county probably and, and I, I told the county commissioners then, we would follow suit. You know, we'd follow their lead, and when it fell apart, then we didn't go anywhere. But to your point, if we want to consider inclusionary zoning as something the city does as a standalone process, we can absolutely do that.
I have a question. There were, there were some recommendations, both in Commissioner Fiedler's letter, but also with some of the speakers mentioned around incentivizing incentivizing a quicker timeframe on developing these units, given, given the parameters that Christiana just described, are any of those viable?
You would have to tell me what they are again.
Oh, things like not issuing building permits for the market rate units until the deed restricted units have been built, for example.
Right.
For every two or for every two market rate units built, there needs to be one deed restricted built. Those are just a couple of examples.
Right. So those are the kinds of terms and conditions, like the, the triggers, so to speak, for when the deed restrictions will be enforced or apply. That we would want to put in the development agreement when we put, set out those terms. So we can certainly look at those options for inclusion in the development agreement to the extent that we can. I would, I would have to double check on any of the specifics on those things, but I think that we could consider them as conditions of the development agreement.
And does that, Christiana, is that, that's not part of, is that part of the P U D or part of the land use?
Nope, that would be a separate thing. This, this P U D is saying that we agree to enter into the development agreement, setting forth terms and conditions of the deed restriction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff or discussion? I, I would say to your point, the suggestions, I mean, you know, Commissioner Fiedler is an example, made some suggestions. I think those suggestions would be germane to a developer who's also building homes. And if the developer sells land to six different people who are building homes, it's hard for me to imagine how you would apply that, but you might still be able to apply it. We can ask Christiana when we get to that point in, in the development agreement, could we apply it across the board? So no matter who the developers are on that property, who's going to build homes, the same rule might apply. It's just something I think we'd have to look into.
Yeah, that would be kind of good.
I know the majority of this is about housing and deed restriction, but can we talk about fast food restaurants and drive-throughs? Just about it. Because this development is a gateway to our town. And this development was also pitched to us as being so walkable. Everything's walkable. In fact, we agreed to decrease the required number of parking spaces in the commercial area because the community was so walkable. And so both because it sets the tone for our town as you enter it and because I think it stands in contrast to the walkability of the rail yard development. I'm against drive-through restaurants in their commercial strip up against Highway twenty four. And I know we made it a conditional use, I think mostly just to get me to be quiet last time. And I just think that's not enough.
I would tend to disagree because I've seen a lot of very well thought out drive-through restaurants. And, and in, in the era of COVID, they may be And in in the era of COVID, they may be more important. And also, we we talk about, you know, the the mom with six kids in her van, who doesn't want to have to get out and go into a restaurant and drive throughs become a critical component of that lifestyle. I mean, I I'm not saying I love drive throughs, don't get me wrong, but I think they're, I think they can be designed to so so they're they're not driving through, you know, on the front edge of the highway. I think that's a conditional part that that I'm in favor of is is let's look at the design and and decide that we're satisfied with the design. So so it 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 isn't a blight on our community. But I do think they they have their place.
With that, is that area part of the area that's limited on franchise businesses?
Well, we haven't gone there yet. I mean, we we still are going to the, Christiana has actually sent me a draft of the formula business ordinance. And that's we, we will be considering that on the, I think, the November third agenda will be our first look at that formula, but you'll see it ahead of time. Because at that point, we need to to be thinking about, is it just downtown businesses? Or do we want, let's say, formula businesses, if it's not in our retail core, we we want them to be conditional in the commercial zone. I think we 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 get to make that decision as part of that ordinance.
All right, you'll be hearing from me again.
I know. But I mean, I, I want to hear that. I mean, I, I, I have a problem because our retail core is only from second to ninth. And so do I want somebody past Second Street to build in a building McDonald's when there's three blocks left in the line of sight in our retail core? I I don't. And so I think we have some some real decisions to make around that.
Okay, thank you for letting me have my say.
Any other comments or questions? In which case I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Tharp moves to adopt ordinance number nine, series of twenty twenty one, and ordinance conditionally approving planned unit development overlay PUD district zoning for certain land known as Rail Yard, Leadville Phase Two, and amending the official zoning map of the city as amended on second reading with the amendments that Christiana proposed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Loretson, second.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson. Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Gowing.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember for Gency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, which is eight fifty one, the public period, the second reading of ordinance number nine. Next on the agenda, we have resolution number twenty nine, series of twenty twenty one, a resolution in support of ballot issued to a appearing on the November second, twenty twenty one ballot regarding implementing a city accommodations tax. Of course, this just all right. A ballot initiative. Any discussion relative to this?
I get.
Councilmember for Gency moves to adopt resolution number twenty nine, series of twenty twenty one, a resolution in support of ballot issued to a appearing on the November second, twenty twenty one ballot regarding implementing a city accommodations tax.
Do I have a second?
Third seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Councilmember for Gency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green. Yes. Councilmember Gowing.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Now, we can't advocate for this ballot issue, but I would like to ask the Housing Commission, Ms. Galiza, how is, how do you feel like it's going with the?
So thank you guys so much for putting that on the ballot. The community has been working really hard. We got most of the many here tonight. We've been working really hard. And when we talk to community members, there's lots of questions about how money is going to be used. We say that it's your discretion, but we think that it will likely be used to the housing director, the senior six man, and so support of building. It's not a super political campaign. It's more an educational campaign. We had those cards go out last week to all registered voters. You should have that one. If you did not, please reach out to me so I can figure out what went wrong there. And we have some more flyers to distribute. They have a little bit more information tracking on website that's gone up. We had two hundred and forty visits just now to the website, which is pretty great. Um, so I I'm feeling cautiously optimistic. But yeah, seems to be good so far. A lot of our personal committee. But it's gone, it's gone well so far.
Thank you for your effort.
Oh, yeah. The community members.
Thank you for your effort.
Mayor, can I ask, Ms. Galiza, a question? How are we doing with our initiatives right now for the the grants that are that are going to be coming out in the future? Are we, are we there? How, I mean, where are we on our?
Great question. So Michael Germin came back to me a couple of weeks ago about the planning grant that the county took the lead on and committed to Dole in September. They had a meeting last week that seemed very optimistic. We will know within two weeks if we have that that grant or not. And I'll let you guys know when we hear.
I got, I got the paperwork today signed and sent it back to, oh, what's his name? Jeff, obviously. He sent me the paperwork.
Oh, sorry. This is a different one.
Oh, it's a different than that one?
I'm talking about planning grant.
This was the planning grant for the, for the rail yards, U R A parcel.
That's the chip grant.
Okay, sorry.
Lots of grants.
Too many grants. My, my apologies. Gotcha. All right.
Um, yes, what the mayor's talking about is we got some technical assistance to move the Laura parcel forward. We have consultants that's going to help us write our F Q, get it out and and hopefully get us a felder really soon. It's great. But back to Max's question, the planning grant is going to help you guys get that recommendation that the Pat brought to you back in April, that campaign.
Oh.
To fix the A U density issue. Get that done, get the community guidelines done. Help you guys explore the issue of some land donation ordinance policy right now. It's kind of hard for you to get rid of rural lands to be built as affordable housing. So that will result that. And have some negotiation with Parkville Water Level Sanitation so that the city county can help them bring utilities to affordable housing developments so that it will reduce the cost of those infrastructure and break down the cost of building. And fast tracking, fast tracking affordable housing development. So if there is a line in the entitlements process with planning zoning, the building department, if some, if we have affordable housing with Albert come in, submitted application, they get to jump the line to fast track the entitlement process, which is good because that can be really, really costly. So those are the big things that are coming. We anticipate, like I said, we'll know in two weeks, probably if we got that or not. Seems like we probably do. And then we'll get the money probably in January. And then it's going to be a hard rush to try and get all of that stuff done by June so that we can put in for that House Bill twenty one twelve seventy one funds that I've been talking to you about. So we can hopefully get up to a million dollars for housing. There's a lot.
It's a lot. Thank you very much. Max, anything else?
So just like in summary, like, have we, a lot of those things have happened or they're like queued up to happen or?
They're queued up.
They queued up to happen.
They're queued up to happen. We've done some, like, the community guidelines are really close. We just need to, like, get you guys together to make the last little tweaks, rent pass legal, rent pass lending. And then it should be ready to go. But yeah, it it's like, we're all just waiting on, because that's a lot of money, right? That's that match that Michael asked you to put in the budget for twenty twenty two to get that work done. And then also need to consider if we do go for the million, million dollar incentive grant, that will require a twenty percent local match, which may be money, but it could also be like Parkville Water, say, Parkville and sanitation say they're going to donate. And I have not talked to them about this, but this is like one example, architecture or something that count as, as a match. So things to be thinking about during budget. I'm going to ask Michael, I know he made that presentation to you a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to ask him to put that in writing.
That would be, that would be helpful. I think some of those things probably will not be in the budget because they're game time decisions. They'll be, they'll be general fund decisions at the time of implementation. But but I would like to see that in writing. And I think we all would. Thank you.
And meeting with him tomorrow. And I asked sort of, and Schneider's meeting with him tomorrow. I asked about that. So look for that coming soon.
Thanks a lot.
Don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. We're trying to do a lot really, really quickly. But fingers crossed we get it all done.
All right. Uh, next up, we have the public meetings planner. Any, any thoughts, additions, subtractions? We do have the L U R A meeting on Thursday, the twenty eighth. And it's really, with all this going on with the L U R A, I would ask, you know, everybody make their best effort and though sometimes it's impossible at two o'clock in the afternoon. But nonetheless, please, please do what you can.
Is that in person?
To attend. Uh, we, we'll make sure there's a Zoom option. Absolutely.
So it's hybrid?
It'll be hybrid.
So we moved the council meeting on the week of the election to Wednesday.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize at the time that I have a Build the Generation meeting at exactly the same time. So I just will have to flip a coin. I'll probably be there for part of it because those are never terribly long.
Well, and also it may depend a lot on what you see in the agenda.
Yes.
How you feel about that.
Exactly. Yeah.
Anything else on the public meetings planner? Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, a couple of things real quick. I was able to give a presentation at the housing conference last week. It was really very, very interesting. It was Noah Sauson with Build the Generation, Stephanie Hall with Full Circle, Sam Gilman with the, with the eviction, you know, prevention group out of Denver and me. And and so the conference had invited us to present because of what we did as a community. And and Noah was kind of a leader through that. But I mean, it really was started between the city, Lake County Community Fund, which already had a disaster relief program in place, Build the Generation, Full Circle. I mean, we jumped on it right away. You guys already know how I feel about this, but I'm so proud of it. And I was so pleased to be able to present. There was a good, a good turnout there in the room and a lot of interest, a lot of questions for our panel to discuss, what did we do? How did we do it? You know, and I just, it was really pretty thrilling for me to be part of that conversation because we worked pretty hard at it. I was going to say, I went to the Parkville meeting last week to talk to them about the bathroom project. And I I need to go to Parkville and and Leadville Sanitation and gain their support whenever we we implement that that project, which will be probably in May and June of next year, that we be able to make stub out the connections of water and sewer to the bathroom project. And Parkville was on board. They said, we'd love to help. We're, we're in. And so next I'll, I'll go talk to Leadville Sanitation. But I think they've already had that conversation and that I think that they're also supportive of it. So I think Marla has has come and talked to you.
Means you were both there.
Well, then maybe I'll just come and thank you, you know, because that's going to be a nice community effort. That's it for me. Any council reports?
Can I just circle back to the the, uh, the calendar?
Yes, please.
November twenty third, I know is coming up on Thanksgiving. Do we, do we have folks that are going to be out of town? Do we want to move that meeting to the thirtieth, maybe?
I'm glad you said that because I was thinking the same thing and I kind of forgotten that.
And I will be out of town on twenty third.
I think a lot of people, that week is is a difficult week to have meaningful meetings. What would City Council think of having that meeting on the thirtieth instead of the twenty seventh?
I won't be able to attend on the thirtieth, but I will be able to attend twenty thirty. I could attend on the twenty third, maybe. I don't, we might, we might get it. The thirtieth, I'm definitely.
Diane, can you make that change, please? Thank you very much. Thank you for catching that.
And then I wanted to just ask quickly about the EV charging station, Third Street Lot. What's the?
Excel.
I see it standing there.
Excel has started the project. They have to bring the power from just past Tennessee Pass Cafe, the three face power is on a pole. They have to bring it down, come under, they have to come under Harrison Avenue. They've done the potholes. And we tried to pin them down, but they said they probably would not finish in until sometime in November. But they, they say they're going to get it done. We, I've gone to the, to the, you know, Charge End Colorado, and they've given an extension. They don't have any problem with that, but they, they have to extend the contract that we have with them. They have sent me the requisition for thirty five thousand dollars that they're going to pay us. That's on my desk so that we can go through the process of getting that money in and then we can pay for the EV charging station. So it's still, it's still a work in progress.
Well, it looks nice sitting there.
It does look nice.
I've seen some people trying it out.
Unsuccessfully. It's just slow.
That's what I'll tell them. I'll say, yeah, you'll get there.
Anything else in terms of council reports?
I have a question, Mayor. Where are we at with the short term rentals and the compliance? I know when you had said it last month that, you know, you'd be starting to send out notices to folks.
And we have, we have not done that. Sarah's kind of handling because we're contracting her to handle short term rentals right now. And so she and I have been talking about it. But the implementation of that has to be in in concert with knowing who who we're talking about. And so it just hasn't gotten done yet.
I read there's some interesting movement at the state level about considering S T Rs and considering property tax changes that would tax them at the commercial rate, which is twenty nine percent versus a residential.
Seven point one five.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, that's going in front of the legislature. As far as I know, two or three times in the past five years, it's died each time. I hope, and I've talked to both our, our representative Ed Senator, which is Julie and Carrie about this in the past, they're, they're in support of that change of making short term rentals taxed commercially, and so am I. However, the legislature has not had the will to even bring it to the floor. So it's a very contentious issue.
Yeah.
It seems like there's It seems like they're struggling with some of the things we worked on, which was like different categories of STR. That was a holdup because.
I think we did, we were very considerate in how we categorized STRs and really considered, uh, you know, uh, primary homeownership is, is something we really valued. Um, but I'm sure the state's going to struggle too.
Mayor, do you know what the size of the lots are that, uh, are out at HCD? Do we know?
No, we don't know. And in fact, one of the things that, that John has suggested, and I think he may have suggested it here, is it could be a four plus, could be four of those units, which I think, I don't have any problem with that. If they're all affordable housing, I think that's a great thing. Um, but no, you know, again, we went into this.
The devil's in the details. Oh, you don't know what you don't know.
Exactly. And, uh, at this point, I'm not too worried about the size of the lot as long as, and in fact, I don't want too big a lot. If you're going to put an affordable house, it's a single story. You know, house that, that, uh, that could be built on a lot for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars might look completely out of place. Um, so, uh, I, I wish I could give you a more definitive answer than that, but I almost prefer that there's either smaller lots or, or combined housing of some sort.
Since the offer, or at least the suggestion of an offer about purchasing those lots seems to be tied to having qualified purchasers, would it be an appropriate time to go to the housing authority? Because I know they're getting the, the whole deed restriction policy in place, but also the qualifications.
Well, that is, yes, that's a, that's a very good point. Would also say, maybe we go to them and, and, and say, is there grant funding out there for purchasing of land? And I, I think they're, in fact, I think that actually ARPA funding may be eligible for that. Uh, for purchasing land or infrastructure, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, um, of which we have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars sitting in the bank right now. So anyway, yeah, but, but there it is. Great, great question.
It is by six lots.
Six, ten and a pizza.
Yeah, we have to wait till I'm not in pie's office again.
This has been not easy, guys. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, it is now.
Your phone's on low battery.
Run out of juice. It is nine ten, the city council meeting, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Mayor, where is the this is easy button?